I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Village of Leonard Council. Today is Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Also Columbus Day today?
I think so.
I believe it's a bank holiday anyway.
It is.
We always do this. Okay, I'd like to ask the council to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And a brief invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one and united, with liberty and justice for all.
Good government, thank you for saying give it to us and allowing everybody to make it here safely and you great, you have a grant wisdom today's meeting.
Okay, let's have a roll call for attendance of the council.
McDonald?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Pellicek?
Here.
Hawkins?
Here.
And we'll mark Jennifer excused. And for the record, both Cleric Laurie Zelenok and Treasurer Judy Verst are present. Council has before it the minutes of our last regular meeting held September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any questions, changes or corrections? If none, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes of September ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. Next item is the agenda. You have before you proposed agenda for this evening. Are there any additions, deletions? If none, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The agenda is approved. Okay, council has before it the Treasurers' report for the month of September. Are there any questions, changes, corrections? If not, if none, a motion to receive, file, the report would be in order.
Like make, make a motion to receive and file the Treasurer's report.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the Treasurer's report. Do we have a roll call for that, please Lori?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Pellicek?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Motion carries. On the opposite side, unless you printed it differently, you have the accounts payable for the month of September. My usual speech applies. Are there any questions, changes or corrections? Otherwise, a motion, a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amounts shown would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, fifty-two cents for general, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars, sixty-one cents for major, zero for local and zero for Mill Park Recreation.
Okay, if there's no questions on the motion, could we have a roll call to pay the bills, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pellicek?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is the public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. The first is a resolution for Family Court Awareness Month of November for Oakland County. Would the council like me to read this or do they wish to waive the reading and adopt it in perpetuity and adopt November in perpetuity as the Family Court Awareness Month?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and adopt in perpetuity for November to be the Family Court Information Month.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion to waive and adopt the resolution in perpetuity for Family Court Awareness Month of November in the Village of Leonard. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
And motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is in regards to adopting an administrative policy that will require a building construction or performance bond for any application for a construction in the village. The reason behind this is, is basically because generally, construction on new homes, et cetera, people close those because they need to have everything paid for, because they need a uh.
Certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, certificate of occupancy, thank you. And otherwise, sometimes we never see the people after their last inspection. Sometimes they don't get a last inspection. So this might be, provide an incentive for them to complete their permits and there are in the ordinance or in our, generally the amounts are set by the building inspector and/or the other inspectors. However, we set, we are setting a minimum with this policy. Basically, if they're less than five thousand dollars, the, the construction bond minimum would be a hundred dollars. There would have, unless the building official finds a significant reason due to estimation errors or other cause to increase the amount. Generally, three to ten percent is the minimum for the stated value in the application. Projects between five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars, a construction bond minimum of five hundred dollars. And generally, post-three to ten percent bond is the minimum unless, again, significant computation errors are encountered as described previously. And the building official may not waive construction bond amount in its entirety in any event. And projects that are between a hundred thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand shall be required to post a construction bond minimum of three thousand dollars unless significant errors in computation have been made as, as described previously. So what's the pleasure? I'm recommending this. If there are any questions or concerns, we can certainly discuss and amend accordingly. Judy, any thoughts on it?
Oh, yes.
I know.
You know, there's lots, lots of people pull just one of the trades like electrical, mechanical plumbing and not a building.
Right.
And those more or less never get a final inspection because people don't bother with it.
Right.
So I don't, I, I honestly don't think a hundred dollars is going to be a deterrent to them. And those bond, those, when you pull those permits, they're usually not tons of money unless it's a new build.
But let me ask a question. Currently, do the inspectors ever question or increase the amount on their own?
See, they, the only one who does a bond is the building inspector. None of the other inspectors ever impose a.
So, so we pay them regardless?
No, they don't do the inspection, we haven't been paying them.
Well, then would the hundred dollars cover the inspection cost for, I mean, my concern is, is that we're paying out of pocket our inspectors because, I mean, they're doing their work when, when they're supposed to. And then when the push comes to shove, they're not getting paid and we're not getting, closing out the permit. So that was my sole, basically why we're doing this across the board for all permits. If you, if the council wants it to be more, a higher minimum, I'm, I'm okay with that.
You know, sometimes a plumbing or a mechanical is between sixty and a hundred bucks.
Yeah. Well, for a hundred bucks, I'd come back. I mean, could we, maybe we could try it and see if it has an effect. Okay. So it doesn't matter if it's a building, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, there's for, between five and five, less than five thousand dollars.
And most of those are.
It's a minimum.
Those.
Yeah, minimum is a hundred dollars and we'll just see how it works.
Do we have a list of how many permits are open right now?
Well, no, because usually after a year.
No, well, they're, I close them off when they're, when they get a final inspection and I pay the guys. If I don't, then it stays open.
Well, that's what, then that's what Alex, that's what you're asking? How many do you think we have open?
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious to know how many are open versus how many are closed over a year. Like if, is it, how big of a problem is it? And then does it, or, and does that make things more difficult for you later where you're like, okay, I have to hold on to this hundred bucks for person Y and then make sure it gets back?
No, because that's all, I, I have a sheet that has all that information on it. So, and then when it gets refunded, there's a note put on that sheet also.
Okay.
And see, we've had a rash, well, for us, you know, like three or four of people installing Generac. And they don't get inspected because they just don't. You know, and, you know, and usually, usually those two permits are probably between, most of them probably under two hundred.
I'm giving it a try if, if you think it would improve things.
Yeah, it's not written in stone in, in as much as the council can amend it, you know, it'll be on our, it will also be on our fee schedule, you know, authorizing.
Okay, so is it going to be, all right, let me rephrase, ask a question about, is it going to be per permit or per job? You know, like if somebody comes up.
Each permit. Each, if, if somebody's building a house, they'll have four.
Right.
Four bonds.
Let's see, like a whole house generator, there's usually only two permits.
So there'd be plumbing and electrical, right? Generally.
Or mechanical and electrical.
Okay.
Because they have to have the gas pipe listed.
So if it's part of a.
Okay, so if it's each permit, that might be.
Well, that is, that was.
Right, if it's, if it's just going to be per job, a hundred dollars, just not.
Yeah, and it's not, you know, it's discretionary for, for how much. If it's a more expensive project, it can be, you know, Tim would increase the amount on a house.
And there, is it a set fee for other communities?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more normal for, for them to have a, these are construction bonds, they're not performance bonds, they're just cash, cash in hand or, you know, they pay the money to the treasurer.
Starting with the rough, starting with the rough bill, then going into the electrical and the plumbing and the heating and.
Yeah, basically building, a building permit would have a cash bond, would have a bond, construction bond. Electrical permit would have a construction bond.
Could we use another community as a, a basis or?
Well, yeah, well, they're all basically follow the same.
Normally, a new build here, there's a thousand dollar bond on it.
Which is not very much, especially when our building inspector says after a year, they never called me back, what, what, where's my money?
But those are the ones that usually go through with it because they came to the CMO if they don't.
Right.
It's the ones.
But the additions and things like that are the ones.
Right, the additions that are the killers.
Yeah. So that's why we're saying there has to be a bond. Every type of permit will require a bond. So it's not just the building official, it's each.
See, and that, that may help because the average electrical one is under, if it's not a huge addition, if it's just something minor, that's usually under a hundred bucks. So if they add a hundred dollars, they had to match with the bond, that may encourage them to get that inspection.
So you're looking for incentive, enough money for them to, to incentivize?
Right.
Yeah, we're not trying to prevent people from doing what they want to do.
Right.
And they're getting the money back.
Right, right.
But, so we're not trying to create a hardship either. This is more.
Just to make sure you've done it to the code.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to apply a construction bond to permitting.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure, just one second, I'm just finishing that up. Okay, thank you. Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicek?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is, did we ever get a resolution for?
You know, I had, could we move that off to next month?
Yeah.
I had some struggles and I need to talk to Michigan Municipal League because there's some legalities involved in the way that we do those that I was having some.
Great Open County does it?
Correct, that I need to make sure that I'm abiding by all rules.
Okay, I'd like to ask the council to set aside item three to the next meeting in All right, moving on then, this is probably the most important item on our agenda is the Halloween trick-or-treating date and time. I would recommend that we set the trick-or-treating date as October thirty-first and the time as six o'clock. I have spoken with the Addison Township Firefighters Association and they are having their annual Halloween party for residents here at the Annex next door at seven o'clock. So that, that would work, that's, which is commonly how it's done. So what is the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to set the time for trick-or-treating in the Village of Leonard for October thirty-first at six to seven P M.
I'll support.
Are we looking to do a street closure or anything with that as well, or is that?
We generally don't, but, but, yeah, police are usually here.
Yeah, it was more just a question.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know that it's, it's never been requested, actually, I know. Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the trick-or-treating date of October thirty-first and time from six to seven? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the tree stump on Forest Street located in the right-of-way where we would be putting our sidewalk on the east side of Forest between Beza and the Polly Ann Trail. I received four quotes of the Rooted Arbor who submitted, or I gave you a nine thousand dollar estimate last month, have revised theirs to six thousand dollars. KNS Tree Service, and they were asked to remove, this is complete removal of the tree and grinding the stump to below ser, to below grade. So KNS is sixty-two hundred dollars. Lopez Tree and Landscape Services is four thousand, three hundred and fifty. And Budget Tree Service is five thousand, three hundred dollars. So.
What was, I'm sorry, what was budget again? Forty-five hundred or is it five thousand?
Budget was five thousand, three hundred.
Thank you.
Lopez was four thousand, three hundred and fifty. KNS was six thousand, two hundred dollars. And Rooted Arbor was six thousand dollars.
And they're all going to do the same service?
Same service, across the board.
Wow.
Yeah.
Because it has to be taken down low enough for the sidewalk.
Correct, correct. One of the providers, I think it was Lopez, said that they would come back if there was insufficient depth, so, but.
They're the cheapest part, right, Lopez?
Yeah, they were the cheapest. He said there'd be no charge if they did have to come back to do, to make it deeper. But they did know, they are aware that we're going to put a sidewalk over it, so.
I just wonder what the requirements are for wood and then all the layers.
Yeah.
The sidewalk doesn't.
It's, well, it's going to rot underneath eventually anyways, but it should be fine, doesn't see that much of a load. So what is the pleasure of the council? And we would, I'm trying to use the block grant money from two thousand and twenty-one to pay for the stump, a portion of the stump removal. The balance would have to come out of most likely, Judy's shaking her head. We could, if we can't find it within line item, category, you know, within a budget category, we'd have to account reserves, we'd have to use account reserves for that. You and I think we, we can get together on that, Judy.
Oh, it's cold, is that, if they're all going to do the same work?
Yeah. And we, we did what, we expended the money we had set aside for tree service on the previous tree removal that we did this year. So I forget what the balance is in block grant for two thousand and twenty-one, remember, Lori?
Um, you know, I was just rack your brain and I was hoping that I had put it in the notes from last meeting and I didn't, I don't have it right in front of me because I think I might have mentioned to you too that the only one is doing two projects.
Yeah.
Per year, so I think we might be able to cover it, but I don't want to commit to that without.
Well, yeah, I think it's, it's over two thousand dollars, so it's, I think it's closer, it's three something. I'm not sure, I'm, I think I'm close.
Yeah, I, I.
But I'm estimating.
I'd like to make a motion to spend upwards, up to forty-five hundred dollars for the removal of the tree at forty-two twenty Forest Street.
Okay, if there are no questions on the motion, the motion is to authorize up to forty-five hundred dollars for.
The removal of the tree on the right-of-way.
Lopez, Lopez Tree and Landscape Services. There are no questions, is there, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Pellicek?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
SWAC? McDonald?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry about the SWAC one, that was just a force of habit there. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay. McDonald, right, we got them all?
Yes.
A little bit autopilot today.
Okay. If there's any problem with juggling the money, we just won't do it, you know, see what happens. Okay, I, I may, I requested two, well, I tried to find three, I found two contractors that were, worked available to dig that ditch line that goes through the trailhead, the village property, from Ashley's property down to the village drain at the intersection of Division and Beza Street. So I, I did, I went down and dug out the pipe at the south end, the water flows north, and the pipe is half to two-thirds full. So if we take it down eight inches or so, it will begin flowing, it should flow again, drain that property that Mr. Moore, Mrs. Ashley have complained about, you know, for some time. But anyway, Arcadian Earthworks, who, who is the company that just did the alley, he gave me a quote of four thousand, three hundred dollars. And that includes just digging the ditch out, putting the spoils on the south berm of the, the trail property, which is where we usually do put it. And he would be seeding and erosion straw mat put, and put in on it upon completion. It'd probably be a little late this year, but tomorrow it should come back at straw mat. The other company said it wasn't big enough a job for them to haul their equipment here, so, so I, that's the only quote I got, was that one.
They do a pretty good job with the, the last one that they did.
I was very happy and it worked out well because Chris Atchison, or Craig Atchison, who does our grading, happened to be in town. And so he, after we got done getting it, the installed, he came back and graded it for us, so it, it's, everything goes where it's supposed to go. This rain is the first test we've had, looks like it's working just fine, so. So what's the pleasure of the council? We're going to make Judy look for the money for it anyways, so. Okay, I'll make a motion then to authorize the cleaning of the ditch on the trailhead property by Arcadian Earthworks at an, at an amount not to exceed four thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll support.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call on that, please?
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pellicek?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was unanimous.
Yeah.
Kind of, sort of. Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on, item number seven is another one I'm going to ask council's indulgence and set this aside. Lori and I have to get together with block grant on this to get a decision. This is where I'm, I'd like to spend the remaining funds in the two thousand and twenty-one budget for block grant on this project for the sidewalk to go through there. So moving on to number eight, council should have gotten the information I received from Wade Trim. I wish Jennifer was here, the planning commission talked about it. Caitlin Haben came and met with, with me and Lori and Lynn, Lori, do you know, was it, did the planning commission talk about?
We did, we discussed it and actually we, it was unanimous that we agreed that we would like for council to go ahead and, and make a decision if you guys would authorize her to be brought on as our consultant planner. We were asking for your, you know, approval on that.
Right. So I, I mentioned it before, but Lori, Jennifer, myself, was there four of us or three?
I think it was just the three of us that day, yeah.
We went to one of the classes, the planning classes.
I'm sorry, Katie was more.
Katie, Katie was with us, I thought there was four.
Yeah.
And she did, she was one of the presenters, she did a good job and looking, looked into her background as far as her, where she, where she works and it's all around our area, but she mostly has concentrated on northern McComb County. on, um, northern McComb County, southern, um, LaPir County. So, um, she's, uh, she isn't available now, she's on maternity leave, um, she had a baby boy, I believe. Uh, but, uh, the, that information I sent you, it had the classification titles and the 2024 rates per hour. I believe she's a professional planner too, which is a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, so a six-hour planning review would cost about eight hundred bucks. So, the range is from seven hundred to nearly a thousand, depending on who reviews our plans. The, any applicant who we referred plans to would be responsible for paying the review by the planner, by the, any professional, if it's an engineer or a planner, um, that, that, they're responsible for those costs. So, uh, from what I, from my discussion with Addison Township, that's right in the range where their, their planner is also, uh, in that price range. So, the, uh, they also provided an equipment, you know, copying and any other related mapping, drawings, stuff like that. There is a schedule for that as well. So, if the council's in favor of moving forward, then you, I would ask for a motion to authorize the village president to sign the agreement with Wade Trim for their as-needed professional services for the village of Lurin.
I'd like to make a motion as stated by the village president.
Support.
You are tired. You just, you just wish there was someone here.
Was the name Wade Trim?
Wade Trim. W A D E T R I M. Okay. Since this is as needed, if we're, if we're unhappy or if the pricing gets out of hand, we can always revisit this at any time, so it's not a, it's not for a set period of time. Okay, can we have a roll call then, Lori, please?
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, I'm sure the planning commission appreciated it too. Okay, moving on to old business ordinance enforcement, forty-two eighty-five Forest. It's been a rough week, rough three weeks. A law firm in Michigan has been hired by a holding company that has the property and rece, has obtained that property and receivership from the original property owners. And they are asking us to stop the demolition, because they feel they have, it's worth more with the home on it. Of course, they have not seen it. They did send a realtor out to take pictures of it. And I spoke with John Coomer, our attorney, at some length. His recommendation is, is that we, that we have to give them a little time to come up with a plan to provide us to say what they're going to do. Are they going to tear it down, are they going to fix it? And then if they're going to fix it, before we stop or consider not demolishing it, we have to be satisfied with the plan that they give us. His, his fear is, is that we, if we proceed with the demolition, well, they will take us to court to stop it, it will cost us money to do that, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas if we can cooperatively get them to hopefully tear it down when they finally see how bad it is, you know, that, they, they sent a realtor out, the guy took pictures outside, but he didn't go inside, so they really don't have a clue. Our attorney has provided them the pictures that we do have, that we used the same pictures when we had, had the hazardous, or the dangerous building hearing. And, um, they are supposed to get back with us. So, yeah, I am not thrilled with this at all, but I also don't want, I really had hoped to clean this up and, and get this done.
Is there any way that we can say, we would love to grant you some time? We think one month is an acceptable timeframe to give you a chance to make a quick flight inspect, make a determination on your plan, and have a plan ready to present?
Great, great minds think alike, that was my sentiment as well, and it.
Does, do the attorneys say you have to give them a certain amount of time? Or is it up to you, up to?
Well, it's up to the village, but if we.
In a month, there's plenty of time to get, get on the plane, go in, look inside, say, oh my God.
I, I concur, and it's been almost a month, because it was before.
They keep dragging their feet.
Yeah, well, it's a whole new, we're, we're dealing with whole new entities. And they told our attorney that they had loaned, the loan, the company that is in, has the house now, had loaned a significant amount of money to the, to, Kaja Holdings. And, but I think it was part of a package, I think they, there was a package of homes that were mortgaged. And that they're trying, now they're trying to recover as much money as they can. So, in, in line, alignment with what you said, Yvonne and Alex, I told our attorney thirty days to come up with a plan to give us to consider. And then, if their, if their plan is to try to save the property, that it will have to be done in a three-month timeframe with a, um, not a construction bond, but a performance bond in an amount of no less than thirty thousand dollars to allow the village to proceed with the demolition, or they can demolish it themselves if they can't repair it in that timeframe. And I hope that sounds reasonable. But it's still, it's more time than, than I like to give, but if, I don't want to go into court and then, and.
Yes.
And have them say, well, they wouldn't even let us, you know, have a chance.
There's nothing wrong with being reasonable.
Yeah.
Has the attorney had that communication with them so far, do you know?
Yeah, he, he.
Okay.
He spoke initially with the attorneys of the, that work for the company, and they in turn, because they're out of state naturally, they had to hire a Michigan attorney. So that Michigan attorney has been in touch with our attorney, uh, over the matter. I have told, um, Mr. Coomer, our attorney, that I do not want to deal directly with them at this point in time. I told, I gave him those parameters, I said, this is, this is what we're dealing, it's kind of a hard line, this is what we're saying, if you can do it in this timeframe, and if you, and if you can't, then, then we're going to take the money from the performance bond and demolish it. Now, John's hoping that they'll come back and say, yeah, the property's bad enough, we're going to have to demolish it, and they'll do it themselves, rather than us have to do it. But that remains to be seen. And we have, John says our, our dangerous building finding is in good order. So we're not going to have a complicated case in, in, in that. The complications will be, they're going to come forward and make their arguments that, you know, they have money in this property and they need it, but it's early on, it's been, it hasn't been quite thirty days for them to provide the plan, and that's what John is working with this other attorney to obtain, so. I, I apologize, but it really, I, I think this is the best way to do it. I, I don't, I don't want to get into a mudsling and fight in court over, you know.
Yeah, we don't have the budget for that.
And they have the deep pockets and that's, you know.
Well, right, right.
Except we wait to go and pay for it, I mean, it might be worth waiting an extra few months if we have to.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but I, I explained to our attorney that we're not going to suffer another year while somebody tries to figure out what they're going to do. And, uh, at least now we know who we're dealing with technically.
If someone went in there and got hurt, whose responsibility is it?
Well, them, because we've given notice, you know, that it's.
So it's not going to come back at the village?
No, no, that we've done everything, that's why I say, we've done everything we have, should have done, uh, in that regard.
When's the last time the house was occupied?
It's been over six years, I would say. Well, maybe not, maybe, there was a renter in there. I, you know, I was looking at my photos, it was twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. I think twenty nineteen or eighteen, maybe.
It's been five, six years.
Shortly after, it wasn't too long after the garage burned, the, the, what do they call that, the, when they, not viral, but, uh.
Viate.
Yeah, they, the invisible garage burned.
What benefit is to these people though, to have a piece of property to pay taxes on, but they can't get any rent from?
The company that originally held them was a bad actor and had, had been, uh, had had legal actions against them in New Jersey and New York, I believe, where they were no longer allowed to do business. They bought these properties sight unseen when they went up for tax sale, whenever that was. And we've been dealing with them ever since, they've been nothing but, the renters have been problematic, uh, for the most part, and, uh, that's how we arrived today. COVID didn't help. COVID, the property, the former property owners had gone to the county treasurer and gotten a, a payment plan that allowed them to pay even less money over a longer period of time to keep it from going on for, up for tax sale. So, as we entered this year, it was ready to go up for tax sale. And, uh, apparently the, this, the company that had loaned the, the money or given the mortgage, didn't want to see it just demolished and removed, so. And, and as I said, our attorney advised that we have to give them an opportunity at least to look at it, see it, so that we, so that we, when we go to court, if and when we go to court, we can say, we gave them an opportunity to review the property and come up with a plan, they failed to do so, we're here today to ask the court for authorization to demolish this dangerous building. But, yeah, it's, it's inconvenient, hopefully it's just inconvenient at worst. And, uh, we'll see where it goes. So, uh, moving on then to the alley drain project, uh, that is complete and it was done in a very effective and workman-like manner. So, uh, and that was again done by Arcadian Earthworks, so I expect we'll get a good job on the ditch project as well. Okay, moving on to DPW, uh, we're getting ready for winter, um, we're getting the rear brakes worked on. We had originally planned on doing them last year when we did all that work, we had to have a new oil pan and fluid changes and all that. But we never, the rust jacking on the pads wasn't as bad then as it is now, so we have to get, we already have the parts, we just have to get them installed. So that should happen this week. President's report, um, we had no Freedom of Information Act requests, no, um, block grant applications that I'm aware of. I had no ordinance enforcement other than the, uh, Forest Street home. And then, um, I did have an incident, or I should say occasion to, uh, interact with the owners and our attorneys again on two fifty-four East Elmwood. DTE, uh, was, had been applied to, for, to put an underground installation into the, the former church property. Unfortunately, the, the owners of the church property have not followed through on their, conversion of the use, to take that from a church to a residential property. And so, um, our attorney has, uh, sent them a letter to that effect, telling them that they need to come to the village to work on the change of use before they start doing any more construction or permitting. And we're not to do that until we're satisfied that the conversion will be properly done and that all of the already identified problems for that conversion are, are taken care of. The owners have kind of put the cart before the horse. Some of you may have heard, um, the owners, when they first looked at the property, wanted to convert, have a dual-use property, being a partly residential and partly for their hobby business, which is something to do with material and yarn and things like that. And so, um, they proceeded to do some, uh, drainage work on the exterior and interior of the building to keep the building dry, which would have applied whether it was commercial or residential use. But they keep, they told Detroit Edison that they were, um, needed the, the two meters so that they could have residential and commercial use of the property and get a lower rate for the electricity for the commercial. That's kind of where I got involved because Detroit Edison will not run for a four-hundred amp service overhead to, to a building now, they, they do it underground. The village would not give them a permit because it doesn't look like, well, we just had to look into it to see what's, what's going on. And as a result, we're at this point where we, we're trying to get things back in the proper order. Fix the building, the items that our building inspectors said needed to be fixed for it to be used as a residential property, then we will treat it as a residential property and, and issue permits accordingly. So, that, that's where we are right now, on that, on that property. It's a, technically it's a change of use. And it's going in the direction normally, if you had a blank piece of property and you were going to, and it's zoned, single-family residential, we have permitted principal uses. And one of those is like in our case, a church, so when the church was, if it had been built under this current zoning, they would have had to go to the planning commission, submit a site plan, and make sure everything met the codes for commercial use, or for church use, as, such as it is. The reverse is now, they, they want to take it from a, a different use to a residential use, and they haven't made no movement in that direction, other than apparently prepare the building for commercial use. So, so that's where we are right now. We want to get that straightened out and then we'll move on from there. And I've directed Judy and Lori both that I'll handle that, the people, they don't have, it's not their responsibility to help them get what they want, they're, they're responsible for their own work. They've, they've been uniquely, unique to deal with, so. So we'll, that's where we are with that. I wanted to ask the council, we received an offer from Evola Speed Signs to add an additional warranty on the two speed devices that we installed most recently. We didn't get them for the first set, I don't think we need them for the second, but I didn't want to not ask, it's three hundred dollars a year per sign, which is, is pretty costly. We've had the original two signs for four or five years now, I think.
So what, what goes wrong with them?
Well, that's the thing, if something does go, it's probably electronic or, yeah, battery burn up or something, but. But, uh, I'm not recommending it, but I didn't want to not, not give you the choice of whether you wanted to or not. So, moving on, um, the, uh, uh, as you may recall, we, the village joined the Cannabis Center for Marijuana, which is a community-based, or it's, uh, it's a state-based organization throughout Michigan, any community can join them. Most of the communities that join them are communities that have approved marijuana, recreational marijuana in their communities. We have not, and it's not their fault, but apparently they've never asked us to rejoin on a yearly basis. They've also upped the price to two hundred dollars a year to be a member, and frankly. They've also upped the price to two hundred dollars a year to be a member, and frankly, I did it at fifty dollars a year. And, uh, it was helpful to become familiar with how they operate, but I don't think it's, uh, significant, significant enough that we warrant that two hundred dollars a year for membership. It's really not geared towards communities that don't have marijuana. And in fact, it's almost an advocate for, they, the people in it just, they're all about it, so. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not gonna join for the village unless the village council wants me to. Okay, um, council, I sent you the paving estimates, the, the financing estimates and all that stuff earlier, or later, or earlier, mid-September. Those were for your information, though, that's to give you some idea of potential costs. One thing that became quite clear, aside from the fact that it's quite expensive, is that, um, if we, if, if you plan to proceed with Forest Street, um, we can only do it one phase at a time, which would start with the southern side. And, um, you should start planning the middle of, by the middle of next year, twenty twenty-five. That allows time for what Lori's running into, you have to have the, uh, Michigan State Historical Protection Organization, you have to file your plans with them, there's, there's a bunch more hoops to jump through when you do a project like this, and you need time to do it. And really, that's, that's where we are right, right now. We can save and save and save, but eventually we're gonna have to go out for construction bonds, and we'll, which means we'll have to hire an attorney and a company that sells, like a broker, that sells the bonds. The good thing is, is we'll have paid off the Forest Street bond by then, and, uh, you know, if the council behaves itself, I, I know we spent a lot of money tonight, but, you know, we can save some money towards it between now and then, which will affect how much we have to borrow, I guess that's, that's my point. Okay, and then, uh, as you may recall, Mr. Moore was in here about the Leonard Drain and the flooding that ensues all the way back up to Porter Drive. The engineer has still not provided us with any plans or remediation, uh, project to do that, let alone how much it might cost. But, um, because I know we're gonna be hearing more about it as we get into the wet season and then next spring, if we don't get them, get something now to tell the residents, here's what it's gonna cost, you know, how do you wanna do this? It, it, we'll, we'll probably take some heat for that. And then Judy and I will probably be working on the budget next month, um, to get it before you, um, in time for, uh, next year, get everything, give you time to develop it. And then finally, um, even though my, my next meeting will be my last official meeting with the village, I'd like to offer, uh, in regards to the, uh, village's participation in the Pollyann Trail, I won't be able to represent the trail on that council anymore. However, if the council would like me to continue to work for the in-kind part on behalf of the village, in other words, village, we don't pay them cash, our dues are taken out in in-kind, and I keep a spreadsheet when we, when we plow the snow, when we repair the trail, when we, if we mow the trail. All of that is written off against the amount of money that we, um, pay each year, well, we don't pay, that we would normally have to pay. And, uh, a year ago, uh, or two years ago, when the, when the Pollyann Trail Council questioned whether they would rather have the money or, um, our services, they much prefer that we continue to do the work that we do, provide, we, we do provide some office space for them, which they don't utilize very much. But we do these other things, haul dirt, haul gravel, things like that, and so, um, it's a good bargain for them, and it's a good bargain for us as a community. And if, depending on however things work out, I would like to be available, you know, I could be called upon for that. We'd have to figure out how to do that, I wouldn't wanna get paid, I'd do it as a volunteer, but to use the village equipment, I may have to, um, I don't know if I'd have to be employed or not, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And also, if it's possible, I might, I might be available for a different, like maybe Planning Committee or some other citizen rep or something, so, 'cause I don't intend to just walk away, and I'd like, like to help as much as I can.
I heard you were gonna be a write-in.
Really?
I heard there's gonna be a write-in.
Yeah, that would be a first. Okay, um, that's basically everything for me, and I apologize that it's so much. Um, the subcommittee reports, some, uh, summer festival, we're on hiatus now, uh, cable commission, anything going on, John?
Uh, not a whole, I'm, they're just one of typical meeting stuff, um, but they were trying to figure out the next meeting, I don't think we're having one this, um, or excuse me, yeah, the end of this month, um, so we're trying to figure out when dates in November will work, just a lot of people have stuff going on for like-
Yeah, this is a tough, it gets, we're getting into, July and December are tough year, are tough months in the year, because everybody has, you know, vacation and everything else on their mind, so. Okay, our decorating committee, aside from kudos to our own coun- counselor, uh, Yvonne, uh, village looks good, got all the, um, outdoor baskets cleaned up.
All the girly stuff.
Yeah, it's, it is, Roland Hall-
No more watering flowers.
Roland Hall looks great, so, so thanks for that, is there anything else, Yvonne, for the decorating?
No, I think we're set.
Okay, there's a North Oakland Transportation Meeting, October sixteenth, I'll be there. Planning Commission, or they meeting?
Not this month.
Not meeting in November, okay.
Do we need a motion for that to-
Oh, to close?
To not have a meeting for, yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Would there be a motion to, uh, cancel the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for October?
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the October Planning Commission meeting.
A second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. All right, motion carries, meeting's canceled. Uh, Judy, would you let them know? The, the, who does that?
Well, usually, like Leslie would send out the notice, I take care of the TV section.
Okay.
Do you want me to send the notice out to the commission? I can.
Yeah, we better do that, just so everybody's on the same page. Then there's a Pollyann Trail Council meeting October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Village Park, I don't think I've noted was on here, oh yeah, there was, I skipped it. Uh, there's a North Oakland meeting, uh, this coming, uh, Thursday. And then there's a planning, uh, Pollyann Trail meeting, uh, Wednesday, or no? I think I got the dates.
Yeah, Wednesday's sixteen.
Yeah, sixteenth is the, uh, trail, and seventeenth is Noda. And then, uh, we did get a schedule for the Village Park, I don't know, did you get that from, uh, Lyndon Oakey? Or thank you, Judy. And then, uh, the balance report is unchanged for community development, because we haven't had any activity, uh, recently. And that's all, believe it or not, that I have, there's no correspondence that I'm aware of, it's a pleasure of the council.
I'd like to make a motion, will you adjourn?
Clock on the button.
Anybody not in favor of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
I didn't hear who seconded, was it, John, did you second on that?
I didn't, but I can.
Oh, okay, thanks.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.